I call our meeting to order. So I'm waving at the digital people to start recording us. I want to welcome everybody to this July 18 special meeting. And let me just point out that Commissioner Tim May is signed in from Bilbao, Spain. So on the agenda it says where he is staying and that an agenda was posted as required at the room so people could be directed to join him, but I see no public with him.[44.23][44.23](Laughter). So anyway, call to order, and we have 10 commissioners present. We have one absent today. I just want to make one quick announcement, and that's to thank the Commission for showing their confidence in me by electing me Chair of the Library Commission, and that I hope that I can fill Tim's big footsteps in the coming year and do a good job for the Commission and the library. Are there any other announcements from the Commission? Seeing none, this is an opportunity now for members of the public to address the Commission regarding items that are not on the agenda, not on the agenda. So we will recognize Tom Papanek.
Good evening. This will be quick. I just want to thank you all for getting to this point in time where we're going to be doing this in a moment, where we're putting this forward. But what I would really like to speak to is really how we got here in the sense that we have line staff now that are working really hard, and I think that we need to recognize that some of the issues that are going to hopefully be addressed by supporting this tax measure, that we don't wait another year to address them. There's people that are retiring. I've heard word that some of these positions are questioning whether they should be refilled or just exactly what we should do with these positions. And I think now is the wrong time to be cutting staff further. Now, whether that's going to happen or not, I don't know. I do know that we had the one woman librarian who did our Spanish language translation retired, and we no longer have a Spanish language translator. So other staff is picking up this work. And I think it's important to remember that we have problems that we need to solve today. They can't really wait for a year or six months, and we really need to address those kind of issues in the present because that's part of what's got us here. So I'm really excited about what's going to happen soon, and I just wanted to bring those things forward because I think they can't be forgotten in the hoopla or whatever the excitement of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment at this time, we'll move on to the consent calendars, which there is none. And that takes us to item number five, action items by resolution. And if you'll recall, last week, the Commission held a public hearing to consider a sales tax ordinance to enhance, maintain, and restore the services to the Sonoma County Library. And this order would impose a one-eighth of a percent sales tax, and it would be subject to the approval by the voters in November and would require a two-thirds vote for passage. So tonight, the Commission is being asked to take the final steps to place that measure on the November 2016 ballot as set forth below. And one thing that's been pointed out to me is there has to be, there is a four-fifths requirement for the passage of this vote tonight because it is a tax measure. I'm looking for Linda. There she is. Is that correct, Linda?
That is correct.
Thanks.
It's an unusual measure. There are special procedures in state law.
Great. Thank you so much. We owe a great deal to our counsel, Linda Shilchin. Sorry. Again, I always butcher your name. I apologize profusely. So item 5.1 is a motion to adopt an ordinance. So does anybody want to put forward the motion?
I move.
I'll do that.
Oh.
Tim?
Oh, yes, Tim should.
Was that Tim?
Second.
All right.
So moved.
Okay. So is there any public comment about this motion to adopt the tax ordinance?
Please take my turn, Chair. Congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
Election to the position.
Thank you.
And may you have a successful term in office. I'm sure you will. My name is Jake McKenzie. I'm on the Ronard Park City Council. I was a member of the Mayor's and Council Members Association when the work started that revised the JPA to its current status and vested in you as the power to do what you are being asked to do tonight, and that is to, if it's your desire to adopt such a sales tax measure and to call a special election. And that's, that's an awesome power that you have vested in you. And those of us on city councils who have put on the ballot sales tax measures realize that very much. And so the public hearing has been held. You heard the sentiments at your last meeting, and so I would exhort you, I think would be the word, I would choose to adopt the resolution and to conduct a special election. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Cox from Cloverdale. I had the pleasure of addressing you last week, and I just have a brief comment. I heard some talk, some of the speakers, about how loaded the ballot is going to be and that our measure could kind of get lost in there. I just don't think we can afford to wait two years to try. I think we need to put it on the 2016 ballot. I have confidence in the voters that they're going to go through the entire ballot and vote in favor of the measure. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Brett. Commissioners, my name's Bo Simons. I worked for the Sonoma County Library for 32 years, retiring last year. I think the Free Public Library lives at the center of what makes America great. It is simply one of the best things a government can throw its money at. It not only makes better citizens, it makes citizens. It informs, informs them, instilling civic virtue and discernment. The library makes people better humans, more informed voters, more empathetic, smarter, better lovers, better social animals, more acutely aware of the vast, complex, interdependent array of networks that sustain and nourish civilization. I've seen immigrants learn English at the library. I've seen smart adults who lack the ability to read come out from behind their clever roots and learn to read and write at the library. And I've seen thousands of children begin to a lifelong love affair with books and reading at the library. I've helped countless people repair their plumbing, fix their cars, sell their cars, build a retaining wall, build a yurt, a tiny house, a geodesic dome, a craftsman cottage, treehouses, patios, gazebos, half-timbered Elizabethan houses. I have gotten recipes for cakes, salads, classic French and Novo Pakistani food for two or one or 50. I've helped people try to repair their marriages, get divorced, find their birth parents, discover their genealogy, contact their congressman, pimp their resume, evict their tenant, defy their landlord. I've gotten calls on the desk in the Santa Rosa Library from an underage couple on Highway 80 on their way to Reno asking what they needed in the way of proof to get married in Nevada. Most people only come to the library for their weekly dose of fiction, audiobooks, nonfiction, DVDs, or some other material to nourish them. What I love about libraries is that they are all about tradition and disruptive change. Libraries in America, change agents grew up together. Benjamin Franklin started a subscription library in Philadelphia in 1731. The Library Company of Philadelphia, the American Free Public Library Movement grew up with the Young Republic. Women were a big part. Women's Improvement Club sponsored libraries, and then the Free Public Library Movement aligned with and shared part with the women-based changed agents, the Women's Suffrage Movements, the Free Public School Movement, the Anti-Saloon League, and the Women's Christian Temperance Union. Peter Burrows, New Hampshire, voted at a town meeting to devote tax dollars to funding a public library, a free public library in 1833. Boston Public, one of the great libraries of the world, claimed the title of that first free public library in the U.S. by opening its doors in 1852. But I think Plucky Petersburg had a 19-year-old jump on Boston. Am I out of time?
Can you wrap it up?
You've seen Brett's great PowerPoint on the library finances, but here's a little backstory. The guy who tore down the Santa Rosa Carnegie Library, missed all the stuff about the Carnegie, built that library that stands there today. David Savsay was totally got the concept of disruptive change in that there should be a statue to that man, that giant of a man who stood about five foot two. He started as the Santa Rosa City Librarian in 1958 and got the city to join the county library, and then one by one, every other city in the county to join up. He fashioned the Joint Powers Agreement that stood for a long time until it was revised a couple of years ago. And what he did was to get every city to give up their little jewel of a library because it made sense. In other counties, the city libraries with a tax basis, great, and those who love libraries congregate, there's a well-funded library. And in the county, in the unincorporated areas, the county library used to have to pick up and deal with the underserved. Savsay created a level playing field and shared the wealth, and that's why we need a sales tax. It's tough to get people excited about libraries, but in other counties, there's the, there are lovely little jewel libraries, the Mill Valley Library, the Beverly Hills Library, the St. Helena Library, and then there's the county library struggling to serve what's left. Not because their libraries are great and make people better, like I've been saying, that isn't why you should vote this tax in. You should do it because we started with a library built for its time. The JPA started in 1970. We are now 46 years, almost a half century later, and what was a Cal County has become a tourist mecca and a retirement destination for the rich. We have not upped the ante for our libraries. We need a funding base that matches our heritage and gives us a shot at our potential. Vote to put the one-eighth percent sales measure on the ballot, or go back to your cities and your library advisory boards and your library users and tell them why not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Mike Daugh. I'm a citizen that lived in Santa Rosa. I also worked for the Library and the Systems IT Department. I'm here again to urge you to vote yes on this tax measure. The library has done a great job with a lot of great people for a lot of years, holding things together. But that's what we're doing. We're holding things together. With this extra money, we can refurbish, revitalize, and turn our library into the next generation of libraries. Libraries are community centers where people can come and learn to use a 3D printer, learn English, learn job skills, read a book, or learn how to download a book. With this extra money and the resources that it can provide, we can do all those things for everybody today, tomorrow, and five to 10 years from now, and do it better each day. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom? If there are other speakers, if you want to come and sit in the chair down here in the arena to indicate that you would like to be next, that would be great. Thank you.
First, I want to congratulate you, Elena, and best of luck.
Thank you so much, Tom.
It's a tough job. My name is Tom Colbert. I'm a member of the Healdsburg Library Advisory Board. I had been a commissioner, and I served with a number of you folks for a number of years. It was one of the most time-consuming, fun things, I think, that I have ever done, and I'm very glad that I had the opportunity to do it. I was a member of the Commission when the new JPA was voted on, when we hired a new director, when the last ballot measure was put on, put forward to the people. And I also have to say, and I'm not proud of it, but it was necessary, I voted that we closed the libraries on Monday. And we had to do it because we didn't have enough money. Well, this is the chance to get enough money, to open them up and run the kind of library that this county ought to have and deserves. And I think it's very much, the ball is in your court now. Unfortunately, you're not the ones that are going to have the final say on it. But we ran a pretty darn good campaign the last time. We came very, very close in a short period of time, and we just barely missed. This time, we have a lot more, I wouldn't say finances, a lot more people on our side, a lot more publicity, and I fully expect that if you folks vote to put this on the ballot, that the county will get behind you, get behind us, and will fund the libraries at the level that they ought to be funded. So I can't more strongly urge you, please vote to put this on the ballot and take any and every opportunity and what you have to do to get this before the people. So please vote to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kate Keaton. I'm one of the librarians on staff here, just a little bit behind Bo in years. I've been here for 30 years. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I did, I decided to, so here I am. Last week, I had the honor of listening to people talk about what the library meant to them, the members of the public. And going back to my library and working this past week, that all of that information just made me so aware of the people who walk into the building, what they need, what they're looking for, and it really was an amazing affirmation for me this whole week. So having that information, and we close at 4:00 on Saturdays, we still have people coming up to the door at 4:00, five minutes after 4:00. Surprise, the library is closed. And it would be great if we had the money to change that, to continue to serve all of those people as they come to the building, as they're looking for what they're looking for, what they're needing. And just hearing that outpouring of support, I actually showed Carol Russell's little speech from last week to the whole staff, just to kind of remind everybody who works in the library why we are here. So I'm hoping this will go forward. I'm planning on committing myself to help make it happen, and as always, it is really such an honor to be able to work in the library and to help these people. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sharon Desrick, and of course, I'm going to urge you to vote yes on this, in part because you have a new head and you have new plans. You've all, many of you have worked very hard on the new strategic plan, and as you know, without money, a lot of it just cannot happen. And you will have a system that is just kind of slowly circling the drain if it doesn't get more money. So I urge you to vote yes on putting the tax measure on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marjorie Lear. Sorry I didn't sit there, but I didn't decide to speak until about two seconds ago. So last week, I read an article in The Atlantic about something that a study recently coined "book deserts." And book deserts are like food deserts, places in communities that people can't get access to the things that they need. So food deserts typically refer to fresh food opportunities for people who live in urban neighborhoods. And when they don't have the opportunity to get what they need, they're in a desert. The recent study was talking about neighborhoods where there were not bookstores or books in families' homes. As a librarian and as someone who has worked in libraries for over 15 years, part of the reason I became a children's librarian in the first place is that I believe heartily in the role of libraries in bringing books and storytime to children's and families. I now have a vested interest in this. He's sitting up there, Wade. And Wade came with me to vote the last time a measure was on the ballot here in Sonoma County. And it was heartbreaking for me because I know, according to research, it's well documented that up to 85% of a person's brain develops by the age of three. And the time is precious, and we can't wait to give access to children who don't have books in their home. The last thing I'll say is that in doing outreach with families that don't have books in the home, consistency is super important. So families need to know that when they come to the library, it's going to be open as they expect it to be. Our libraries are hard for someone like me to remember with my work schedule, and when Wade and I plan to go to the library on Wednesday nights, it's crucial we get there on Wednesday nights after work. So I just want to speak for the families who need that access to books for their children. That three years is crucial, and I think it's our responsibility to give families in our community what they deserve as citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Baker. I also didn't plan to say anything. I'm actually not one of your constituents. I live in Napa County, but I'm also a librarian, and my husband's a librarian. He's the Assistant Director of Napa County Library. I used to be the Director of the St. Helena Public Library. And I'm now currently serving on the California Library Association Board, so kind of sort of have a reason to be here. Mostly, I just wanted to say I really encourage you to put this on the ballot because one of the things I've seen over the years working in libraries in California is since the state funding dried up a few years ago, libraries, even libraries that used to have really, really fantastic services, have kind of, they've really shrunk. And they've, libraries that used to share a lot with each other aren't doing that anymore. And libraries and librarians are incredibly resourceful. We can take a dollar and stretch it further than anybody else. But you have to have that dollar. But if you have the money coming in, if you've got dedicated funding, there'll be more opportunities to work with other library systems and really do fantastic things. And I really like to see that happening all over California. And I'll go ahead and speak for Napa County. I know you guys would do awesome things together.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Haupt, Branch Manager at the Healdsburg Library. I wanted to comment on something that I heard last week when we were talking. One of the commenters mentioned the need for clarity and kind of a comment about wanting things to be as well-described as possible about how the money is going to get spent. And I just wanted to say that I think that that would be, you know, we should probably do the best we can if we do pass this to, or we do put this on the ballot, to, you know, try to be as clear and concise as possible. I noted in her comments that, based on my understanding of the documents, that, you know, there might have been some confusion there, and I think we should take that as a warning, that we need to be as clear and concise as possible in the descriptions of what we plan to do and how the money will be handled, and the citizen oversight, and just as very carefully described as possible so that the average person will know what we're talking about. To that end, though, I still think we definitely need to put this on the ballot, and I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jane Snively from the Cloverdale Library Advisory Board, and we've heard testimonies last week about how much the library means to so many of us in so many different ways. But I would like to say, I can't speak for all the cities in the county, but the people of Cloverdale are willing to work very hard to pass this. We've already got commitments to go to the farmers' markets with publicity and to work as hard as we can, our library advisory board and our friends' groups and other people. And I think you need to know that there's a big cadre of people standing behind you to help you pass this.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Now, if the commissioners would like to make comments. And one thing I forgot to mention in the beginning of the meeting is, a tradition we probably should start following, but especially we have a member by, I don't know what we call this.
Video call.
Remote Skype or something. But when you speak tonight, could you please state your name, you know, Commissioner Smith, et cetera? So any comments from the Commission? Barbara?
Commissioner McKenzie speaking. I received, probably everyone did, a couple of emails today with the question of why sales tax and why not a bond measure, and I just thought that we should address that in public. If there's an answer to that, I know there is.
Bradley, our library director. I believe I saw those emails too. I think the two folks that sent the messages asked or said their preference was a parcel tax versus a sales tax. You know, what I can say to that is that we explored both, and it goes back to, again, the surveying that we've done of our residents over the last year and a half and asking those questions. And what we've heard is of a one-eighth cent sales tax or, I believe, a $20 parcel tax. It was the sales tax that the residents were more supportive of.
Thank you. Any other comments? Reese?
This is Commissioner Foxon, and I'll build on what Brett said in the fact that oftentimes parcel taxes are, they fall more on the residential side than they do on the whole side because there are a lot of exceptions to parcel taxes. And when that happens, a good many of the people here in this county rent, and when they rent, they're more than likely on a limited income. And more often than not, the parcel tax on the piece of property that they are renting from are passed on to them. So it's actually the lower-income people that are more often hit than somebody who has more money. So that was one of my thinkings and one of my reasons behind not supporting a parcel tax.
Any other comments? I just want to point, this is Commissioner Whistler. I just want to point out that it is contained in Section 16 of the ordinance, is the adoption of the expenditure plan and accountability for expenditure of proceeds of the tax. So I think that's an area that people have had a lot of questions on, where's your expenditure plan? So the expenditure plan has been adopted as part of this ordinance, and it's referred to in this section. And there is also a direction in this section that the Library Commission will establish an 11-member citizen oversight committee to annually review the expenditures and the appropriations of the tax revenues to ensure that they're properly spent. So we have to figure out exactly how the Commission is going to figure out who to appoint for that, but we'll be working on that, I would assume, over the next couple of months before this actually goes to the voters, or the voters get a chance to vote on it. So that's what I have to say. So now, now is the time to decide, you know, to vote, and I guess we will be doing a roll call vote, which is to state your name and your vote. So we'll start on the far end with Hillary Smith, who is the new Vice Chair of the Commission.
Commissioner Smith, aye.
Commissioner Neff, aye.
Commissioner Foxon, aye.
Commissioner Eubright, aye.
Commissioner McKenzie, aye.
Commissioner Grill, aye.
Commissioner Heavenridge, aye.
Commissioner Garcia, aye.
Commissioner Whistler, aye. And then what, Tim? And then which, Tim?
Is it my turn?
It's your turn.
Commissioner May, aye.
Great. Thank you.
May, aye.
So we have 10 yes votes and one absent. All right. So we'll move on to the adoption, adopting a resolution to call an election, and that is 5.2 on the agenda, and do I hear?
I move by resolution that the Sonoma County Library Commission call a special election to submit to the voters of Sonoma County a proposed 1/8% of a sales tax measure entitled "The Sonoma County Library Maintenance, Restoration, and Enhancement Act," and ordering that the special election be consolidated with the statewide general election to be conducted on November 8, 2016.
Second.
All right. This is an opportunity for the, oh, Linda Garcia, I think? Did you second it?
Was it McKenzie?
Was it a tie?
It was a tie.
It's a tie. Two seconds.
So this is an opportunity, if there are any members of the public who wish to comment on this, seeing no members of the public coming forward, I would like to take a roll call vote on this also.
Commissioner Smith, aye.
Commissioner Neff, aye.
Commissioner Foxon, aye.
Commissioner Eubright, aye.
Commissioner McKenzie, aye.
Commissioner Grill, aye.
Commissioner Heavenridge, aye.
Commissioner Garcia, aye.
Commissioner Whistler, aye. And?
Commissioner May, aye.
Right. So that again is 10 in support and one absent. All right. With the accomplishment of this item, I want to ask Linda Shilchin to, who is our counsel, and will, like, I've asked her to come and speak to the commission about what the do's and don'ts are for commissioners once this is on the ballot.
Good evening, commissioners. Good morning, Commissioner May. I am going to take just a few minutes of your time, as I've been asked to do, to talk about the restrictions on using ballot resources for campaigning purposes. I have asked staff to distribute a document that's available for free on public website Institute for Local Government. It's a fantastic resource. I have a few extra copies if anybody in the public would like a copy, but again, this is available for free online at the Institute for Local Government website. The top page is a handy-dandy chart that is pretty simple to read of basic rules of what can be used and what activities should not be done with public resources. At the back of that chart is a much more in-depth review, which I encourage you all to read because it is important. And if you have specific questions, to discuss those with Director Lear, he and I have had a lot of discussions about these, so he has quite a bit of knowledge of this, and you're always welcome to contact me as well. Just for a general review, the basic rule is that public resources may not be used for ballot measure campaign activities. Public resources may be used for informational activities. So public resources can be used to put a measure on the ballot, to prepare an objective and fact-based analysis on the effect of a ballot measure on the agency, to distribute that analysis through regular agency communications, such as the website, to adopt a position on the measure, as long as it's at an open meeting where all voices have the opportunity to be heard. And any agency communications about ballot measures should not contain inflammatory language or argumentative rhetoric. Individuals and employees can use their own time, of course, to do their own campaigning or contributions. This is focused on restrictions of using public resources, including staff time or staff materials, staff computers, to send or contribute to campaign activities. So that's the basic. You have all of the details here. That's just a brief summary. But again, keep this handy-dandy chart and also the more in-depth. And Tim, I can send you a link. I'm sure on your vacation, you'll be thrilled to read them. And if you have specific questions, coordinate with Director Lear, and he can send those questions to me as well. Before I go, I just, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to each and every one of you for all of the time that you have spent on this commission. I know that you work very hard, and my family is a regular user of the library. I've had a Sonoma County library card for 40 years. We go every week, and my daughters have benefited so much from your incredible librarians and your staff. So thank you for all that you've done for my family.
Thank you. So with that, we will go into closed session. This is to discuss public employee evaluation, and we will be in closed session for approximately 30 minutes and then reopen and adjourn. So don't feel like you have to stay for that. You will find out what happened in closed session, but you're certainly welcome to stay and keep Jane company.